Good evening and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education's January 2nd reorganization and regular meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 22, 2023, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America, unto the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, I'll share the election results, the official elected election results from the November election. Ms. Cassandra Craig had 6,383 votes. Ms. Cynthia DeCalvante Nurse had 7,472 votes. Mr. Pritpal Panda had 3,486 votes. Mr. Paul Marini had 6,287 votes, and there were 180 red in votes. So with these results, the three candidates that were elected to serve on the Hillsborough Township Board of Ed for the next three years were Ms. Nurse, Ms. Craig, and Mr. Marini. There was also two questions that were on the ballot that day that Mr. Volpe has shared the results of previously, but just to recap the official numbers, for the security department question, there were 6,289 yes votes and 5,324 no votes. So that question did pass. And then for the additional staffing question, there were 6,503 votes and 4,973 no votes. So again, that question also did pass. So as Mr. Volpe has done previously, we thank the community for their support with these questions. At this time, I'd like to administer the oath of office to the three incoming board members, and I'm going to start with Ms. Craig first, if you can meet me at the podium.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, Cassandra Craig.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome to the board. Next will be Mr. Marini. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Marini.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and this state.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Paul Marini.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, welcome back to the board. And lastly, Ms. Nurse. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cynthia Cindy DiCapocanti Nurse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Cynthia Cindy DiCapocanti Nurse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations and welcome back to the board. So at this time, I would like to take the first official role of the new board, starting with Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Marini.
Here.
Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Ms. Stats.
Here.
And Mr. Treheo.
Here.
We have a call. So at this time, I would like to take nominations for the office of president of the Board of Education.
I nominate Ms. Stats for president.
I nominate Paul Marini. Seeing no other nominations, at this time, I will close nominations for the office of board of board president, and I will call for a roll call vote of that. During this vote, you are to state the name of the person that you are voting for. First person to get, if either of the tier reaches five yes votes, that person will become the president of the board. Starting with Mr. Davis.
Paul Marini.
Ms. Jackson.
Paul Marini.
Ms. Craig.
Paul Marini.
Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Paul Marini.
Mr. Lee.
Paul Marini.
Mr. Marini.
Paul Marini.
Ms. Nurse.
Paul Marini.
Ms. Stats.
Jane Stats.
And Ms. Treheo.
Jane Stats.
So Mr. Marini is elected with the seven to two vote for to be the board president for the next year. Mr. Marini, please come up and assume the desk. Assume the chair. Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Now we'll take nominations for vice president. Open it up to the board to nominate.
I would like to nominate Ms. Nurse for vice president.
Any other nominations?
Can I nominate myself?
Please.
I nominate Joel Davis.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. So as with the presidential vote, you will need to, during roll call, state either Ms. Nurse or Mr. Davis, and five votes will allow that person to be vice president. So if you move on to the roll. Mr. Davis.
Joel Davis.
Ms. Jackson.
Joel Davis.
Ms. Craig.
Cindy Nurse.
Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Cindy Nurse.
Mr. Lee.
Cindy Nurse.
Mr. Marini.
Cindy Nurse.
Ms. Nurse.
Cindy Nurse.
Ms. Stats.
Cindy Nurse.
And Mr. Treheo.
Abstain.
Okay. With that, Ms. Nurse is vice president. Congratulations. I'd say you can move seats, but I think you're already in the right seat, so that was simple. All right. So we will now move on to board president's report, and for this, I will establish the board committee approvals, and we will, the liaisons will do it at a future meeting and will put up on the website, but for the committees, we do have the committee individuals. So for HR, that will be chaired by Ms. Cindy Nurse, and will include Mr. Lee, Ms. Lanning Beeter, and myself. For education, that will be chaired by Ms. Jackson, and that will have Ms. Stats, Mr. Lee, and Ms. Craig. For operations, that will be chaired by Mr. Davis. Will include Ms. Treheo, Ms. Lanning Beeter, and myself, and then the governance committee, which is the chairs of the other committees plus myself, will be myself as chair, and then Joel, Cindy, and Elaine Beeter on that committee as well. And that concludes the board president's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things to go over in my superintendent's report. First, I wanted to make sure that as we have elected new board members and board leadership, this is school board recognition month in New Jersey. So if you wouldn't mind me reading this proclamation for the work that school board members do, it states, whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the Hillsborough Board of Education is one of 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts, and whereas the Hillsborough Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for the approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education, and whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectation for the schools, and whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation for College Through Advanced Placement Offerings and SAT Assessments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staff toward the advancement of our children's education. Thank you all for your service to the school board. Thank you, Cassie, for what you're going to do on the school board, and if you don't mind, if you don't want to give yourselves a round of applause, give each other a round of applause, because it's hard work being a school board member. And Cassie, if you didn't know, it did say in there no remuneration, so I think that sometimes is, I'm kidding, sometimes it's just what you guys do for the love of students and for the love of kids, so thank you for that. Further, as part of my superintendent's report, as Mr. Eckert did say, I did want to again thank the people of Hillsborough for the results of the election, particularly for when it comes to the two referendum questions that have been passed. We are very busy hiring, and as you will notice on this agenda and future agendas, we will identify the positions that have been hired with, you know, in parentheses, referendum under the hire. And I'm very proud that we have been working hard, and not only do we have hires in the pipeline, and some we're still searching for and want high-quality candidates, we have three on the agenda for tonight. One of those people I'll be introducing to you in a second who is here, the people of Hillsborough chose to have school security as a priority in our schools with personnel. I'm very proud to introduce former police chief of the Randolph Police Department, David Stoco, who is here tonight, and he will be our first coordinator of school security operations. Mr. Stoco, if you wouldn't mind just coming to the podium, introducing yourself to the public, and then at some point after you're approved, you have to get home because your first day is tomorrow.
Thank you, Superintendent Volpe. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. It truly is an honor and a privilege. I hope that everyone here had a wonderful holiday season and a very happy new year. I consider myself very fortunate and blessed to be here. School security is a topic that I'm extremely passionate about, and I want to thank Superintendent Volpe and his team for putting their trust and confidence in me to head up your school security initiative. School security is something that we all play a vital part in and have a responsibility for. I look forward to supporting and complimenting the entire team here, the staff, parents, faculty, students, and helping continue to make Hillsborough School District a safe and secure environment that is conducive for learning and student development. So thank you again. It's an opportunity. I'm very excited to work with everyone here and excited to do great things and further your security initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, one of the many responsibilities David's going to be taking on with me is on Friday, we have a full day of interviews scheduled for the building monitors position, and it is my hope that if I can't fully staff all of our buildings on the January 22 board agenda, that at least we have most of those hires made. And I also wanted to talk to the community, again, thanking for the referendum questions. You know that when you went into the booth and pushed a button, there was a very specific number there, how much money was involved that the community was willing to give. We are not going to exceed that number. I put together a couple presentations with some approximate numbers for things, but we are going to stay, I want to make it very clear in those guidelines. As we start to hire staff and some teachers, some teachers are going to come with some experience. When we hired a counselor who's on this agenda, that comes with a master's degree and automatically puts them on another scale in our, on our guide. But in the end, we're monitoring the hiring salaries as well as the type of benefits people are taking and are budgeted for, and we are staying within those budgetary guidelines. So I just want to make that clear. As you start to see some hires come across, everybody was budgeted as a teacher on BA Step 1, because as Mr. Eckert will tell you, that's what we have to do according to the state. Is it likely that every hire we make is going to be a Step 1? Probably not. That's going to involve a lot of work from my business office and myself, keeping track of all numbers, including things like supplies and health benefits along the way. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are looking very carefully at all these numbers, and we are going to hire great people, both as teaching staff members and supports for students and also for building and safety security. So that being said, that's my superintendent's report.
So just to clarify for the public, if we have a budget for a security role, and that includes both the salary and benefits.
That's correct.
The total cost not to exceed for that individual is the combination of those two amounts.
That's absolutely correct, yes, and that overall number will not exceed the number approved by the voters.
There were some questions on the internet. So I hope I make that clear, the internet somewhere.
And obviously, if anybody has any questions, you can always reach out to me in the office. I'm very happy to answer any of your questions about the referendum. Additionally, I forgot this. If you go on the website, since November 9, there has been a main headline on our website that says, "Thank You, Hillsborough," that has frequently asked questions about the referendum. It's got three pages full of stuff, and as new questions come up, I answer that and update it on a regular basis. So if you do have any questions about the referendum, before you shoot an email or make a phone call, take a look right there. We're happy to be open and transparent and let you know all the information that we can. Now, Mr. President, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item on here is the meeting schedule. So I will first take a motion, and I think there'll be a lot of discussion from board members on this, so.
Actually, may I, Mr. Eckert, is it possible, like, how would we move this topic to after public comment? Because the meeting schedule has changed significantly, I would like the public to have an opportunity to make a comment on it before the board votes.
That's sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely, sure. We will move it to after first public comment and before the other action agenda items. Thank you for that recommendation, Mr. Treheo. All right. So next, we will move on to motion to approve meeting minutes. That is 9.1, motion to approve executive session minutes 12, 11, 23, and 9.2, motion to approve regular meeting minutes 12, 11, 23. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have just a small comment, just a really small typo. In the regular meeting minutes, there was a point when I was talking about school boards, and it said covering six years of case law in one hour, it should be 60. It was so minor, I just said, let me say it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We will update that. All right, with that adjustment, any other discussion on the meeting minutes? Ms. Lanning Beeter?
I just, I will need to abstain on those two, since I was not present.
And I'm assuming, Ms. Craig, you will also abstain. So with those abstentions, seeing no other comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. I would like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed, and we will move on to committee reports. And let's start with operations, if you don't mind.
There was no operations committee meeting.
There's no operations this week. Do we have HR?
Yes. The HR committee met on Wednesday, December 13, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. The items discussed were job descriptions, long-term substitute and leave replacement compensations, personnel matters, two of them, and then we discussed about the job description and the application for coordinator of security and operations. And then we did move on to the activity participation fees and discuss where we were going in terms of the rest of the year in discussions, and decided that for the next few months that we were going to take a look at the spreadsheets about how many students are involved in the clubs at all the different levels, and also to start taking a look at the clubs and their purposes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Kidd is no longer on the board. He's the, he was the chair of education.
I have, I have it, if that's okay.
Just let me.
So the education committee met on December 12. On our agenda was the approval of several new course offerings at the high school. First course was a semester elective called Forensic Science, which will replace a course called Medical Laboratory Techniques. Student interest appears to be more in the area of forensic science. A textbook to accompany the course was also reviewed and pending approval, I believe, tonight, since we missed last meeting, the course would be offered starting in September of the upcoming school year. Three additional elective courses were reviewed, including Intro to Business, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, and Investing. The district is looking to strengthen a CTE pathway in business for students, and these courses would help to achieve that. Finally, AP Photography and Selected Topics in College Math were the last courses reviewed. AP Photography is proposed as a full-year course, enabling students to learn more advanced photography techniques, as well as positioning them to be qualified to take the AP 2D Art and Design course. This course may come up for a title change in the new year as we need to be in line with the college board's naming conventions. And Selected Topics in College Math will combine the current course of the same name and applications of mathematics to ensure that all math courses offered will meet graduation requirements.
All right, thank you, Cindy. And for governance, I had a conflict, but I have the minutes, so I will read those. And if there's anyone else that was there that would like to add any other commentary, please feel free. For the governance committee, the main action item was to do the board meeting schedule for this year, which we're going to have as an item that we will discuss shortly. There were a couple informational discussion items. One was the referendum next steps, and that was the hires that we have on the agenda for today, the discussion of salary, et cetera. We then discussed the strategic plan, Phase 2. So obviously, that survey went out to the committee, we had some of those discussions, and now we are meeting in person on a Saturday for six or eight fun build hours to review the results of that. And last but not least, an update on the tax bill mailing from the township and some costs associated with that. Any other comments?
I just have a comment. When board members are speaking, if we could speak into the mic, it's hard even on the dais to hear, and I think there is some, yeah, yeah.
Oh, really?
Like, really close. Thank you.
Is this easier to hear? Thank you, Mr. Treheo. All right, and that concludes the minutes. All right. So now we will move to the first comment, comments from the public, public input on the action agenda and the 2024-2025 budget. We very much welcome input from the public during the board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time of the meeting where you'll open to public comment. Remember, to the public, aren't allowed to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period. It disappeared on my screen. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may concern the residents of the school district, as per law 0167. Before you say your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address, or is it limited limit on public comment? Please understand that our public forum does not structure this question into sessions, but rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board, and if it's what the board believes is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, board president or acting superintendent will address the comment. Every time a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions, telling you, you're a public need act, there are rights of public employees to come to their, and to not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And there's an action superintendent that will tell you that's a public comment last year. All right.
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Ottin Road School and ETA treasurer. Is this budget also, it's very hard to hear, or is it just action agenda right now?
Any comments on the budget or the actual?
Okay, I said it was hard to hear. So this is about the budget for next year, as the operations committee starts to think about those things. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm freezing in this room right now. I have my jacket on. The hallways in this school, this is where I teach, there's no heat in the hallways. If you walk through a hallways, it is frigid. I know they're working on it, so just thinking about it from a budget standpoint, just working on ways to like make climate in our buildings during when it's hot. I mean, the air conditioning is great now that most spaces are air-conditioned, but in the winter, the heat is not consistent. So, you know, as you start to look at that and look at operations, like looking at ways to streamline that or make it more efficient, our building and grounds guys are great, like they'll come, they'll get up. We don't have enough of them, of course. So just something to think about as you move forward with the budget for next year and thinking about, you know, the, the. thinking about, you know, the many climates of all of our buildings and the best way to make it a comfortable learning environment for everybody. Certain rooms didn't have heat today, like, it's, you know, it's, I'm cold right now. I don't know if anybody else is, but just something to think about. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. Good evening. Congratulations to the returning board members and the new ones. I would like to speak to item 13.1, which is travel on the agenda, specifically the travel to the 25th International Conference on Autism, Intellectual Disabilities and Developmental Disabilities. This obviously is a needed topic and an important one, so I take no issue with the conference itself, but it did raise concern to myself and many members that we're sending two administrators to Hawaii for $6,455.04. That's made even more difficult when many of our members are denied travel to even sometimes in the state or the tri-state area. I know that the board received communication from one of our officers discussing a time that she sought to attend a conference in Connecticut and was denied that because two, another administrator was going, when in fact, we're sending two to this, and I don't know if they're presenting or what the context of their attendance is, but I do know that even our members who've been invited to attend at different conferences and to present at them, sometimes at no cost, have been denied in the past. And I realize the past is the past, but we are in a situation where we're considering the morale of our student, of our staff, and we're considering what we can do to make them feel valued. And this is sending, you know, perhaps not intentionally, but this is sending a very difficult message to them, given what they've gone through. I would also say that I think it sends a problematic message to the community when we've asked for their support in kind of building ourselves back. And I duly recognize and fully recognize that these are different funds. This is Title II. It's not the same funds as our general operating, so I fully grant that. What I'm saying is optically, I don't know that others in the community would see that. What they're going to see is we're sending two administrators to Hawaii. And the problem with that is when you look at what goes on at that conference, because I was curious, the first day sounds important. There's a lot that goes on the first day. The second and the third day, most of the time is made up of poster walks. So there's morning breakfast, poster walk, breakout session, noon, poster walks, general general business afterwards for the association that's presenting this. So the question is, what are they doing in the time that they're not having poster walks or a general breakout session for three to four hours, so cumulative maybe six to eight hours over those two days of whatever's happening in those breakout sessions? The brochure for the event goes on to say, and I quote, "Escape to a tropical hideaway at the Hilton Hawaiian Village, located at the widest stretch of beach. This 22-acre paradise features the best pools and water slides in Waikiki, as well as the only saltwater lagoon. Dive into culture with daily activities, the onsite luau, and discover the picture-perfect stay in Honolulu." That's the, that is the brochure from the conference. And whether or not that stuff is there, that's what our members are seeing, and that's what downtime will be used for when we can't even leave the state to go to something that directly benefits our students. So whatever is decided tonight, I urge the board to think about both the explicit and the implicit message of the passage of this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Paul Anderson, Woodfield Estates. I want to echo what Henry just said. I've been to Hilton Hawaiian Village, but it's for a vacation, a honeymoon. It's not a place you go for a seminar, okay? Especially at the expense of the taxpayers. I'm sure it's a very informative development program for these administrators to go to. I'm a parent of a severely autistic child, and I can appreciate them needing to learn as much about that, but I looked here tonight before on my phone, there's multiple seminars in New Jersey nearby, even New York City, on various issues with autism, and that's something they should be looking into. And in this environment, where you've just taken the taxpayer for more referendum money, which, hey, the thing was approved and voted on, but we got to take the taxpayers into mind and start running this district like a business. You're the CEO of the district, and you guys are the board of trustees, so you've got to step in and make a decision on something that's probably not necessary. I wonder if these two people went to Atlantic City for the teachers convention, okay? A lot closer, a lot more reasonable, and apparently, they might have learned something if there'd been a seminar on autism down there. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, if you'd like to add some comments?
Sure. To clarify one thing before I ask Dr. Felcher to clarify a couple things, too. As Mr. Goodhue did state, these are not being used from local funds. These are title funds, so this is not something that is coming from the taxpayers of Hillsborough. And as far as the conference itself and what it is for, Dr. Felcher, would you mind speaking to that? And board members, you also have some notes in your board docs for yourself there, too.
As far as the conference and what it is for, it is for autism. Our high school community-based instruction program has been recognized as a model program for diversity, equity, and inclusion, for for improving outcomes for individuals with autism, with disabilities, and intellectual as well as developmental disabilities. And because of this, the two administrators were asked to present. It's it's an international conference on autism, intellectual disability, and developmental disabilities. They've applied to present for the last three years. This was the first year they were accepted. I mean, they obviously knew where it was when they applied, but they've applied for the last three years. I don't know where the other two conferences were the last couple of years. We don't have a say as to where the conference is held, but this year, it's in Hawaii. It's a special honor to present at an international conference. They have presented, well, Dr. Radwan has presented in Atlantic City just this past year, as well as last year, and Dr. Lopez Lopez went to Washington, D.C. to represent the district at a recent conference in the fall as well, so.
So just to clarify, there's no district funds being spent on this?
No, this is title funds. This is federal funds through professional development.
And and Dr. Felcher, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I may very well be wrong, but as far as with the Title II funds, we have approved both staff members, not administrators, for out-of-state travel and perhaps was there one for international travel as well?
We did. We sent a teacher to Dublin, Ireland this year.
With the Title II funds?
With the Title II funds. Yes, we did. So I can't speak to when they were denied. I believe that was before me, so.
Hello. Sorry. Oh, hi, Leisha Gabrielis. I live in Hillsborough. Just wanted to touch bases on the 8.1, the motion to approve the regular meeting schedule. I just, I had mentioned at the last board meeting, it'd be nice if we could go through the summer time, basically, so that you could put the Board of Ed meetings on the calendar that gets printed. And I also wanted to add one other thing that I know that you have booked out the next year for, you know, just when are, when are the days going to be open and closed? So I just thought it'd be nice if, you know, that goes from '24 and '25. That's on the calendar on the website right now. So it'd be nice if we could have the Board of Ed meetings listed. If you, you know, next year in January or whenever you decide that you wanted to add extra community meetings, or you wanted to change when a board retreat was, you could, you know, you could probably make those those tweaks. I don't think the public would mind so much. But just for the few people who try to schedule their activities around board meetings, it'd be nice to have them on the calendar. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Seeing no others, we will close the first public comment session, and we will move back to 8.1, motion to approve regular meeting schedule. So this is kind of, I guess, a brainchild of you and I speaking over the course of the year and looking to, can you raise my mic up? Hello? Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just keep yelling if I go too quiet. So the the idea with this meeting calendar was kind of the idea of we don't want to meet just to meet, because we're meeting twice a month. That's what we always do, we just want to show up and maybe have 20-minute meetings, say our piece, and leave. So the idea here in the adjustments to the meeting schedule were to add some more community events where it made sense, more community, direct community interaction, as well as additional board retreats throughout the year, so the whole board can meet as a whole and discuss, you know, as a publicly posted meeting, and take advantage of some of those times to to move that forward, as well as maybe having some of these meetings be just regular meetings with no action agenda, just for discussion points throughout the year. So you'll see here within the calendar behind me, we do have some additional dates moved in here for HSA visits, community engagement nights, secondary board member HSA visits, and then I believe one, two retreats throughout the year in addition to that. So I will open it up to, so I guess we first have a motion and a second, and then we can have official discussion by the board. So can I get a motion a second on this 8.1 calendar item?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments and discussion by the board on what's presented up here on the screen?
Go ahead.
Who went first?
Ms. Davis. Go, go for it.
Me? What?
Okay, Ms. Lanning Beater?
Thank you.
You can't hear me, so I can say things, you know?
Sorry. I just wanted clarification on board member HSA visits. I'm fully in support of that, but I just wanted to know if you could have more of an explanation of what that might look like, how many of us would be going.
When this was originally discussed, it was was an idea I brought up, and we discussed it at the governance committee. And the theory behind it is, we have nine board of education members, and we have nine schools, and that we thought it might be nice to recognize our HSAs, that we're not just reaching out to them when they need something, we need something from them, but to develop a relationship with them, so that in February, we could decide that, hey, who's going to take which school's HSA meeting? And then again, in November, hey, let's switch it up and let's get to know a different HSA meeting, because we do value the participation of our HSAs very much. I've had a chance to get around to a lot of those meetings, and I know that the board members have said that they would like to have some face time as well. So it wasn't about a committee or nine people going. It was, we got nine buildings, we got nine HSAs, we got nine board members. We can, I'll let you guys figure out who goes to which which one.
And the limit would be four, obviously, per per meeting with them, if you wanted to go to more than one.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. As a second-year board member, I still feel somewhat overwhelmed by the avalanche of information, the the speed with which issues come across, reading through the agenda notes prior to a meeting, trying to have some sense of arms around things. So my concern is that I would not want to adapt a meeting schedule where we would have less contact with one another, where there'd be less information flowing. I don't want to just show up once a month and and say yes to things. And, you know, it's been said that, well, while we may reduce business meetings or public meetings or things like that, we don't want to necessarily reduce board events or board board contact opportunities. And that's my biggest concern, because I learn the most from interactions and conversations and comments made by fellow board members.
And I think it's a great point, Mr. Davis. I think the idea here was by having multiple board retreats, that allows us to have full board communication, share ideas, review topics, and replace one agenda meeting with the retreat offsite. So you're actually, in my opinion, you'd be getting a little more out of it, because now, twice a year, you get the whole board, kind of openly discuss items without having a set action agenda, action agenda for that meeting. So that may or may not meet your criteria of what you're looking for, but that was the idea behind it. Ms. Nurse?
And just to clarify, I think if, you know, when you hear about something, it sounds like, oh, only one meeting a month, but if we look closely at it, there are really, we've always only had a meet, one meeting a month in July and August, so that is pretty much stays the same. June, with the amount of end-of-year events that were coming, and with people and our administrators spread so thin, and, you know, some of our board members are also in attendance at a lot of these end-of-the-year events, we thought that that would benefit everybody in in giving full attention or more attention to those end-of-year events. But like Mr. Marini said, the board retreat is in place of a second meeting, so there's more ample time for us all to talk together. And I think there's only just maybe three or four times during the course of the year. I think the two months where we go to the HSA visits will be those. I think, too, if we ran it and decided after February, wow, this didn't work out so great, and we need to have more, my assumption is, and excuse me if I'm wrong, but I think that we can say, wait a minute, this didn't work out so well, and let's go back in November, and let's make that a second meeting, and then we can orchestrate HSA visits in addition to, for those that can give that time. So I think.
The board can always call for additional meetings, should, you know? And I think back to, I think back to COVID times, I think boards are always like scheduling, oh, my gosh, there's some new thing, we need to have a new meeting about it. I think that what you described is an accurate structure, and if there needs to be more board meetings, that's the board's prerogative.
Yes, special meetings just require regular notification periods, and then emergency meetings can be emergency. The other change that you didn't mention, just so everybody has full transparency here, there's not two meetings on this in December. We were pushing two weeks in a row just to get the two meetings in. I think the last meeting that we had this year was like a 15-minute meeting with nobody here to show up, because we were just fitting those two meetings in December. So there's never no value in a meeting, but, you know, those things could be potentially consolidated. Ms. Stats?
Aside from the, oh, sorry, aside from.
You have the loud mic. We found it. One trade.
Any glass break? Aside from the points that Mr. Davis made, which which were good points, I'm also concerned about the fewer opportunities for the public to make comment. And I understand sometimes there are, we have meetings where there is no comment or very few comments, but we can't predict what can happen that could prompt people to want to come to the mic and speak publicly. And I, I do, although I do appreciate the community engagement night, I would have liked to have seen more of that. The HSA visits are nice, but that's one board member at each location, so it's not really a sharing of information among everybody, certainly not people who don't have children in schools. So I guess my main point is the lack of opportunity for the public to to speak publicly in some venue for related to the schools.
So I just, just a point, it's not limited to one board member per, you can have up to four at those, so we can have more than one board member at different HSA meetings. There was just a point that we have nine board members that could do one each, but if people want to attend multiple back-to-school, HSA meetings, they could as well. Ms. Gueh?
So with respect to the HSA meetings with the visits, one of my concerns is that we, we as board members, when we were elected, we we knew Monday nights, and we knew Monday night was going to be the night, second and fourth, you know, sometimes it varies a bit, but HSA meetings are all different nights of the week, so that, you know, kind of, I think puts, some people may not have that availability. That doesn't mean that they don't care to go. Like, for example, with the referendum meetings at the back-to-school nights, I looked at the calendar, it did not fit my schedule. Several of them were my children's back-to-school nights, or I had a standing meeting that I had to go to. So I actually didn't attend any of the referendum meetings. I don't know how many other board members did. I know that I saw a back-to-school night at the high school, Ms. Stats and Mr. Lee, but I don't know for the other schools, right? So that's point one. Point two, I had sent around a proposal, because because here's the thing, at governance, I was like, yeah, it sounds like a good idea. And then I thought about it, and I was, wanted to talk about it with the full board on the December 18th meeting, which was, you know, canceled due to weather, unfortunately, so that was a missed opportunity, which kind of puts us in a, in a tricky predicament, because this proposal, I didn't really want to throw it at folks on the break, so I was only, you know, sent it today, so it did not really give people a chance to to review really give people a chance to, to review it. But when I compared the different, the regular meeting, which is second and fourth Mondays, that would be 22 regular meetings in a year, that would be 22 opportunities for the public to speak. Did we have a board retreat last year in '23? So we had, so that would, that was 22 public meetings for the public to speak, one board retreat for all of us to talk in depth. Okay. With the, you know, administrative slash governance proposal, that's 15 regular meetings, so that's seven fewer meetings, so seven fewer opportunities for the public to speak. It adds two board retreats, so that's a delta of one from last year. It does add a community engagement night and two HSA visits. However, it is not, like those, like, I feel like those two should be in addition to rather than instead of. And so my proposal kind of takes us back to 2010, I think, prior to Dr. Schiff coming to our district. So this is just like when I was looking through the historical things, where there were two board meetings a month. The first board meeting was an act, sorry, it was a work meeting, where board members could, that would be an opportunity to do reports, committee reports, it would be an opportunity to do board member training, hear presentations from administration on different topics that we may request to know about, like innovative programs. It's also an opportunity for students to come and share what they're doing, I believe. It was lovely to have the mixed chorale come and sing. I think in the past, we've had students from the elementary schools give presentations about the stories that they wrote. I remember one year, there was like a great presentation, it was like to music. It was like, I think it was Kesha, This Is Me, and like, they all had like, it was a video, but we also had students showing this is them, like the art, the art that they did. And I think that we got away from that with COVID, and it would be great to bring that back. And a work meeting would be an opportunity for us to have that back. The other concern I have is by going to essentially like one action meeting a month, we lose, we lose the, um, the appointment. I'm concerned about personnel appointments, where it becomes then perhaps back to the way the summer is, where it's like, you either do it retroactively or you, you know, give that authority to the superintendent. And I feel like, as a board, in, in a way, that that is one aspect of the board's responsibility, to review it, even if it may just be routine, but that we do have that opportunity to review it. And by going to one meeting a month, I feel like we, we voluntarily given that, given that up. I did, in the proposal, note that there were some, in December it was, that it was a back-to-back meeting, so I crossed that out. But under my proposal, it would be 19 opportunities for the public to speak with two board retreats, so kind of a compromise between the two. It's, but especially like what I'm thinking about is the work meetings would be that opportunity for us to talk, kind of like now. Like, I would have loved to have had this conversation as a full board, rather than just in governance, because as we, as we, and here's the problem, right? You know, when we talked in governance, okay, it sounded good, but then you, you percolate on it, right? Kind of like when we had the homeschool discussion, right? Ms. Nurse, like, you, you saw it, like, some things that come up at a meeting, it's like, okay, they made some good points, but now I, ooh, like, I think about it, oh, but I had to vote that night. So it seems a little bit rushed. Whereas, like, if you have a work meeting and then you're actually voting two weeks later, you had some time to percolate on it and to think about it. So I would, my proposal would be, if we could approve just the January 22nd meeting, because that's the same on all of them, and in committee, perhaps the governance committee could review it, people could think about it, and then at January 22nd, we could adopt then the 2024 calendar. And actually, it reminds me, Ms. Nurse had a great idea, is that when we adopt this calendar, could we go through January, so that way we don't have this. So a new board will be seated in January. That would give them opportunities to think about these things, rather than being asked to vote on a, a agenda, like, when they're just like brand new. So that was my proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Nurse?
It's great to hear everybody's perspective, and that's why I, I like this. And, you know, there was a push for board retreats. I like the idea of some working meetings. But I think maybe if there is, I would agree, that it sounds like we have to talk a little bit more to see, I don't know what that's going to look like, though, because now we're back to committees with, with four of us. So I don't know if you're thinking, Jean, that it gives everybody time to hear what's been said tonight, and think about it, and be ready to speak to it at the next, their next committee meeting?
Angela, so at the January 22nd, hopefully that we could, you know, kind of hash it out in committees, have the, you know, I, I propose, I'm not married to this proposal, it's just a starting point idea. But I think giving people some time to think about it will, at the January 22nd meeting, perhaps that could be when we could have that full board conversation. Maybe people have different ideas. I don't know.
Maybe this is just a year of trial and error, every time I get closer to it. But, you know, in thinking what you're saying and trying different things, for, for me, I like the board retreats. I think they're great. I wouldn't move those. I'm glad that we had two instead of one. But where we do have the HSA visits, maybe we think about replacing them for those work slash, work sessions where action may be taken. And then in December, since we only have one meeting, maybe that's where we try to get to an HSA, just to try everything to see what we like. But I, I think if everybody thinks about it, we can table it. Is it possible to table this until January 22nd?
Can I just add, you guys can decide to do whatever you want to do, but I just want to add a couple of things in. You know, I first started circulating this, and I know there's been some minimal discussion in July. I don't know what I can add value to in bringing it back to committees for further discussion, other than just a continual circular discussion, because it's been out there for, for many months. The other thing, Mr. Hugh, what I'm, I'm hearing you describe is, like, really, that other meeting is a committee of the whole. And right now, if you wanted to do committee of the whole, where everybody gets to hear everything going on and not taking action on it, you just approved committees. So the board and its bylaws does have standing committees. So what I am hearing as superintendent is you want the committees, and then you want the committee of the whole, because we don't know if everybody's going to agree with what the committee decides. So I think if you're going to have further conversation about this, rather than a conversation about the schedule, it's got to be what kind of board do you want? Because, for example, this was discussed at governance, this was then published out in the minutes, this was then put forth, and if the whole board needs to discuss it, my question to you is, do you want your committees, or do you want the whole board doing work session items before action items? That, I think, seems to be something at the crux of this here.
I disagree, I think. And I, I think that's because this involves everybody, right? Our committees are there to tell, you know, HR does HR, operations does operations, education works on the education aspect. Something such as when we're all going to meet, and what would be the best and most positive for us and our establishing for our committees is something that we should all talk about. Yes, it was talked about in governance, but like you said, it was talked about in governance, it was put in our brass tacks, which is our form of communication from the superintendent to the board, and now we're supposed to vote on it. So there was no discussion. I don't think that that means it's a committee of the whole. I, I think that means this involves everybody, and everybody should be able to talk like this. So I understand the work, I don't see the work session similar, unless we're just calling, like, if everybody starts feeling more comfortable in having these discussions at the dais, maybe we don't even need to separate the two. Maybe these are just what our meetings look like.
But I, I think that's more of the point, Ms. Nurse, is that either we have these board meetings, we're doing working sessions, one of them, if we do that, we might not need the committee meetings, because we're now basically having committee meetings the first, first meeting of the month, because I kick my water bottle. So.
But I'm, I think you're, I don't want to say you're twisting it. In my mind, it sounds like that, but it's probably not. But like I said, I don't think that we all need to sit here and discuss every item that HR committee does. I think this involves everybody. Something like the school calendar, where there's different opinions on that, should be a discussion for everybody's thoughts and opinions. So I, I don't, I still find relevance in having committee meetings where we can focus on different aspects of the district. But there are times when we need to have these discussions, so, you know, we're, we're hearing opinions. We want to hear from the committee, community, but we also want to hear from each other.
Yeah. Sure. Thought, as, as a board member, one of the principal ethical issues that is kind of drilled into us when we get oriented to become a new board member, is we need to, at all costs, avoid ever having conversations where there's more than four people. You don't want to accidentally come up with a quorum or something like that. And a lot of this information does get shared by email, gets bounced around. And, you know, email can also be thin ice. You know, if you've got five people on the CC list, or suddenly you have a quorum. But it's, not that I want to invent new administrative tasks, but when this item was published, you know, we, we get to see these things. And sometimes I reply by email, and, but I only reply to Mr. Volpe or Paul, or the president, our president, because, you know, heaven forbid, you don't want to copy all. But if there were perhaps some mechanism whereby such emails could be aggregated, if we want to use that word, maybe once a week, or whatever would be pertinent to, say, a topic like this that involves the whole board. And the comments could be shared anonymously. So, you know, board member one said this, board member two said that, to give us some opportunity to kind of feed at the trough of what people are thinking, without it necessarily being a live conversation or a quorum endangered meeting. I don't know who would do that, or how many more people we'd have to hire to get that done.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of tricky, because that's the brass tacks.
But yeah, I think, for, this is some inside baseball. I think when it does come to that, Joel, I think there's a lot of times in my Friday communications to the board that I do exactly that. I say a board member asked a question, and I try to publish that, that information to, to everyone. But as far as anonymously emailing each other, we would, we would probably be violating sunshine laws, and we can't do anything like that.
So, so if we're looking at the schedule as it's on, yes. I mean, one option would be make, make the HSA visits, for example, at a meeting, and invite the HSAs to discuss and make it a meeting with the ability for a public comment. That's one option. It gives you two more meetings. The only one that really wouldn't be a meeting would be the community engagement night. And now you're talking about one meeting in June, July, and August, one in December, and then the only other outliers would be the two retreats. So, I mean, there's, there's a bit of compromise there. So we could schedule the HSA visits as a meeting, and invite them here to have discussions. That's also an option.
And part of my intent, too, and I just want the board to, whatever decision you make, to make it with full information. My intent in proposing something different to the board, as far as meetings, was to find ways for you to engage with the community with the limited amount of time you have. Now, you could just say, just schedule more meetings. But to Ms. Trujillo's first point, some people can't make certain meetings at certain times. So it's trying to put together a set schedule where the board and administration would go to a community engagement night to see people, go to HSA meetings to see people. Because I think it's not only important for you guys to interact with each other, or to have an open podium where I'm looking at the audience and there's, you know, a single-digit amount of people here, but to find ways to, to further engage with people. And that involves sometimes trying something new. So I wanted to provide something new where we could get out there and, and see people. That being said, that's the information that I was thinking for the board. If that doesn't work for the board, it's your decision to decide how you wanted to schedule meetings.
Mr. Hugh?
So we definitely appreciate the, um, the, this proposal, because I think it is thinking outside the box and trying to get more engagement. And as you were both speaking, I thought that, you know, I, I still like going back to two meetings a month, except for when the meetings are back-to-back, so that we can have this conversation like this. I would love at the next meeting to talk about the 24, 25 calendar. For the HSA visits, though, what about inviting them? Right, right, but like, celebrate them, not to have a conversation, but like, tell us what you're doing in the schools, so that it's part of the, like, the work meeting, basically.
I think you could do both. I think you could do both.
Yeah, I, I think we can invite the HSAs anytime if we wanted to do that. But I also wanted to, at least from my end, express to the HSAs, hey, we're interested, we don't just want you interested in what we're doing, we want to be interested in what you're doing. We want to go to the schools and talk to you about your issues, not necessarily have to, have you come to us. So again, that was my intent. You guys can decide what you want to do with that.
Yeah, I think the thought there was, this predates, Mike, but HES built a playground. The board didn't really even know they were doing it. There wound up being like penalties and fines for, for inspections not being done. The board was like, we didn't even know that the HSA was building a playground at the school. So I think part of the board interacting with the HSAs is knowing what they have planned, what events, we can support those events, we can promote those events, and we can provide maybe some assistance in some of those situations.
So I'm going to make a motion to, to, can we, I mean, I don't know if we want to amend the calendar right now. I like Ms. Nurse's idea about, you know, making the two HSA meetings back to board meetings. That brings us to 17 opportunities for the public to speak, down from 22. I'd still like to see two board meetings in June. I don't know.
My personal opinion is June is, is a lot with graduation, so I would not want to have two meetings in June. That's my personal opinion. I don't speak for the board when we're up here. But, so there's two options. We could make the amendment to make the HSA visits actual meetings, those two days, and approve the agenda as then described. Give us the opportunity to review it in committee. If we want to make additional adjustments at the next meeting, we can then revise the calendar at that point.
What about November?
I think November's the, yeah, the two HSA visits.
So, so November would then not be 18th, it would be 11th and 25th?
It would be, uh-
There was something with one of those dates. I can't remember, because we were looking at that. Do you remember what it was? We talked about it in-
Well, 25th is a half day. Does that make an issue? The November 11th is a school day. November 25th is a half day. So the proposal had November 18th as a board meeting. And so if we go, if we take that November HSA meeting, make it a regular board meeting, it would almost be like back-to-back. So I'm saying that go back to the second and fourth Mondays in November. So it would be November 11th and 25th.
If there were the holidays in that day?
Can I just ask, does everybody feel this way? I know that some people haven't been talk, talking a lot. Like, I sort of, I mean, I'm trying to sort of meld everybody's thoughts together, but I do like the idea of going out to a board meeting. And I know that you said that we could do that on our own, but like, we also said, it's, we're all very limited with our time. So I, you know, it's great to bring them here, but I, I do agree with Mr. Volpe in that we should be willing and able to go out and, and see what they're doing as well. Like, are we okay if we change maybe one of those meetings? Like, one of those times to a regular meeting and keep one of, like, I would love to do the February HSA, just because it's coming up, it's quick. And then maybe, like, you said, June, we only have one meeting, you didn't love that, but maybe we try to go back again in June to hear how the schools are tying up and what their plans are for the following year. It might be a good time to add that to our meeting, to have that type of engagement, if, if you're looking for that.
So we don't need to put that on the calendar, per se, because that's not going to be a meeting then. So the only question here is, I, I'd want to, if you want to add the second February date for now, to have two in February, if that's something that the board wants. If that's something that the board wants. I'm perfectly okay with what's shown, but if the, if the board as a whole wants to move February back to two meetings, it's not much of a change from last year.
Well, I think that one of the reasons to, to do that is that's coming up on budget season so that we continue to give the public opportunities to speak. It also allows us to talk together about topics that have come up in committee that we want to hear everybody else's opinions on.
We do have two meetings in March and two meetings in April that conclude with the budget hearing. So we do have a full two months of consistent meetings before that. Ms. Stats.
Sorry, you are loud, you are loud enough, but for some reason it sounds muffled to me, so I just want to clarify some things. Are you saying that you're possibly changing the HSA visits in November? Is that what was said?
I would like to start with February. We can consider this if we need to make an adjustment for November 1. We can revisit that. We've got a lot of time before then. So my immediate proposal would be to approve it with the amended February date to make that a meeting, a second meeting in February.
So the second meeting in February will be?
A board meeting. We can invite the HSA if we want. That's separate.
Okay, that's, I, I like how we're trying to, you know, work with everybody's idea. The only thing is we're looking at it from the point of view of the HSAs themselves. I mean, that's, that's more of an intimate location within their family kind of school where they can discuss more casually as opposed to here presenting. It's not like they're going to be conducting their meeting here, you know? But I, I appreciate how that they're, we're trying to have a compromise, but I don't know if that's really would serve what our goal was, especially with respect to HSAs.
My point was to add February back. If we can discuss separately the HSA meeting, the discussion with the HSA at the next committee meetings, we can have that discussion on how we want to address that, maybe plan some meetings throughout the next couple of months. They don't all have to be in the same week or the same month, but we can schedule those. My only compromise at this point that I'm recommending would be to switch February back to two board meetings.
Okay.
And then keep the rest of the schedule as is for now. And then we can approve it. That gives us a couple of months before there's any impact to not two meetings a month. We can come to some sort of agreement over the next month or two and then amend the calendar if we decide to at that point.
I do like the idea of the community engagement night. If we'd have another one, that'd be great. And as far as, I know people keep talking about how busy June is. I, I know that week of graduation is busy, but it concerns me that we have three months in a row of just one meeting and nothing else.
So I think we got a couple of months before that comes up. So I think we can have those continued discussions.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, I'm with you. I completely hear you. I acknowledge that point. I think for tonight, we can amend that one date in the calendar, approve it, and then have discussions, and then bring it up for another vote if we decide to change the calendar at that point. That would be my recommendation to the board. So the next time where there wouldn't be two meetings a month at that point would be, I guess, May with the community night, but we have a couple of months before we get to that point. And there's also another recommendation to schedule out January, the two meetings in January for the next board. So we can also take that into consideration as well with the amendment. Joe, you got all that?
I'm, just for clarification, Paul, you are saying to make the February 12th we would be looking at?
I'm looking at the calendar right now, so if we're looking...
So that would be consistent with second and fourth Monday?
Right. I'm just looking at the district calendar just to make sure we don't have any...
I think the one in the middle is President's Day is the 19th. It is the 19th.
That's 24. February 24th, yeah, you're right. Yeah, February 24th. 19th, the school is closed, so, so it couldn't be the 19th, it could be the 12th.
It has to be the 12th.
12th. Well, it could be the 15th, but we'll do the 12th. So we'll make the adjustment to change the February date of the HSA visits, change it to February 12th, and everything else would, else would remain the same for the time being.
We need a motion to make the amendment. Second, there's a motion on the table.
I move to, I move to amend the calendar instead of saying February board member HSA visits, I would like to amend it to say February 6, 2024, regular meeting.
February 12th.
February 12th, oh, sorry. February 12th, board member HSA visits at Eris slash cafeteria.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yes.
Yes. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
We'll do, take a roll on that?
Are we, excuse me, point of clarification, are we voting on the amendment only or...
Just the amendment right now to change the calendar.
If that passes, then you vote on the calendar itself. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Sure.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now, we already have the motion to approve the calendar. It's now been amended. Is there any further discussion before I move to roll on the calendar itself? Seeing none, we'll take now roll on the calendar itself with you then. Eat that one.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trillo.
Yes.
That motion passes. We had a working meeting whether we liked it or not. That's good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for the board's consideration of the following motions in the area of education. Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses, affirming the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determinations, authorizing the submission of the FY 2024 additional or compensatory special education related services to students with disabilities beyond age 21 application, except the grant and the award of the mount listed, approve new course proposal for forensic science, approve new textbook adoption for forensic science, approve new course proposal for Intro to Business, approving a new course proposal for investing, approving a new course proposal for sports and entertainment marketing, approving a new course proposal for AP photography, approving your revised course proposal for selected topics in college math CP, approving curriculum writing, and approving a field trip destination.
Can I have a motion a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hugh? Sorry, Ms. Stats?
Well, especially because of the points that were brought up via email today and also during public comment, I do have concerns about the professional travel, especially for the one to Hawaii, well, two to Hawaii. I guess that's, that's what concerns me, that there's two of them going. And I know it's not our own money that's going towards it, but I'm guessing there's a pot of money and if that money can be spent elsewhere to serve the purposes of that pot, that's something to consider. Not to mention, fair or not, the optics of having two people go to that location when other times that is not permitted.
And just to clarify, are both individuals going to Hawaii or presenting, or is that just one of them?
They're both presenting.
They're both presenting. Mr. Hugh?
So I agree with Ms. Stats. And in addition, my concern is about out-of-state travel, right? It's, we have in the tri-state area many opportunities to have professional development. And I understand that where these conferences are located are out of our control. However, I mean, Hawaii is, it's just optics, it's bad. That's number one. Number two, the other individual who's going to Denver, same thing. I mean, it's, like, I'm all for professional development. I think professional development is something that we should support for administrators and teachers. But like $6,000 for Hawaii for two people. And then the other question is, it's coming up in like three weeks? Like, that's a really good airfare, right? So like, I'm just, like, I'm surprised, like, I guess it's part of the package, but like, I'd like to go to Hawaii for $659. So anyway, so I, I will vote no on those out-of-state travel.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Ms. Stats and Mr. Hugh. I'm a no.
Ms. Nurse?
I guess I have a question. I don't know if it can be answered now, but in terms of, a lot of these are happening in January. Does that mean they were pre-approved by administration so that airfares have been booked, hotels have been booked? Would that be a good assumption?
Dr. Felchery, do you know that answer or no?
Probably at this point, but all staff are advised to not book their, book their PD until the board approves it.
I guess it's, it's hard and I'm glad that the issue has been brought to our attention so we could talk about it. I hesitate to say no. It is expensive. I think that we need to watch what we're doing and, and fairness. When we have two administrators going to the same place, and I understand that they're co-presenting, but it is very difficult if we can't approve as many. I have not, as a teacher, I have not been anywhere in forever, and it is hard to see when so many administrators get to go somewhere. I think something that would help a lot is we have the names and where they're going, but job description would be very helpful if we can include that so we can see and the public can see our teachers going, our TAs going, our administrators going. That, I think, would help clarify to the public where we're sending people.
Sorry, and who is being?
Yes, and who is being sent? Is it always the same people? And I know that administration has to meet requirements as well. I will be saying yes. I think it would be nice to, and I know it always can happen, but because so many of these are in January, my question for any staff member would be, can we get this paperwork in a little sooner so we can see? And so then there's plenty of time to prepare because it is hard when somebody's waiting. January 5th, that's in two, three days. Okay, it was on. Were all of them on for December 18th? Okay. That makes more sense if... Okay. Yeah, so I, I think that's, that's hard, but it's definitely something, like, I will be voting yes, but I think if we can just, so the public knows, so we know who's going, what staff members are going, that in terms of positionally, that would be very helpful.
Ms. Craig?
I, I apologize since I am really getting acquainted here, but are, is there any information about what they're actually presenting on?
I don't have that information with me. Dr. Felchery, do you? It's about which, which program is it about? Yes. Our community-based instructional program.
Okay. And is there any goals for them coming out of going to this conference that we're looking to have them accomplish aside from the presenting piece?
As far as goals from the presentation?
Well, no, for them, get any kind of information that they're going to obtain from going as professional development on their part.
No, they're, they're presenting. I'm sure while they're there, they may be...
So the expectation is just that they're presenting?
They, yeah, it's kind of an honor to be brought to this international conference in order to present. I actually thought this was very good for Hillsborough. I'm not going to be removing my recommendation, so honestly, if people have further questions about it, I want to separate it out. That's board's choice. Yes.
I would, you used the word honor, and I think this, it's an honor for these folks to have been invited to participate in this event. If it were Carlisle, Pennsylvania, we wouldn't be talking about it. We'd be celebrating it. You know, so there's, there's a tinge of, of not wanting someone else to, to benefit in some sense that might be seen as unfair. But the fact of the matter is, it's an honor that these folks have been invited. We're, we're honored as a school district to have folks on our staff. That's not necessarily on the lips of everybody walking around Hillsborough. But, you know, in the long run, the accumulation of those honors really does benefit the school district and the reputation that the school district has.
And to let you know too, and the board members have this note, we have another, we'll have to really talk about this, I think, in committee then too. We have a staff member, a teacher, who's up for an award. She gets the award, she's going to be flown out to Colorado for a national conference. So if we're going to start picking and choosing where we are sending people, again, is the international conference in Denville, New Jersey, or is it out of state, or is it out of country? That may be something we need to discuss deeply at a committee as to what are our parameters for these types of events.
Ms. Stats?
Just to let people know that there are, we've had quite a few staff members that have been honored with providing presentations. They haven't gotten attention, maybe because they didn't go to a place like Honolulu. Also, not to beat a dead horse, but it sounds like not having that meeting in December has created another problem with the, the timeliness of approving this, so.
True.
I just have a question in, in regard to all of this and what's come up. When people are invited out to present or to be given an award, do any of the, is travel included with any of this? And this just happens to be a case where they're paying for everything on their own? Like, do, are there times when you're going to present that whoever is running the workshop or conferences pays for the hotel for the presenters or pays to fly them out? Do we have any of that knowledge?
If you're a keynote, often, not if you're a presenter, if, if you get an award, often. Like, if you, if you're given an award often, but you submit to present, so not often. Really high up there.
And to be fair, I know some folks would much rather spend a couple of days at a casino in Atlantic City than go to Hawaii because they like to gamble. So, I mean, it's all, optics are optics, but there may be certain locations where some people would rather go that may not be quite as expensive. All right. Are there any other comments before we move to roll on this?
Are we going to separate it out or just...
I think on the vote, you can call something out if you don't want to approve those individual lines on your vote.
Okay.
If you, if you're going to vote no, there was just a meeting clarification, they couldn't hear you.
If, if you want to vote no on individual line items, you can call them out on the vote. I vote yes, except for a lot of the two people that are going to Hawaii or going to Whippin, New Jersey. There's some, some guys sitting next to me going to Whippin. All right, so we will go ahead and take a roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, with the exception of 13.1, no.
So you're voting no on all 13.1 or just the... If you want to exclude just those going to out-of-state or just going to Hawaii, you can pick which ones you want to exclude.
The no is for both trips to Hawaii.
But the Colorado one is a yes? Okay.
Ms. Craig?
I would be voting the same as Elaine.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah.
And she's sitting right next to me, so.
Voting the same as Elaine?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
I'm going to make this a little complicated. Voting yes for everything except for, I approve all of 13.1 except for one of the, the women going to Honolulu. Which one it is? I guess it's up to administration to determine.
You have to identify which one.
The first or the second one was the...
What?
If you can see, if you can see the list, you could tell us if you were voting no for the first or the second one listed.
The first one is Lori Lopez. Lopez, and the second one is Susan Radwan.
You have to.
I, I don't care which one. I just think it's only be one.
You have to pick one.
I do?
Yes. Because you have to vote yea or nay.
Then I guess no for both.
No for both, okay. And then Ms. Trillo?
I vote yes for all, except for out-of-state travel. So that would be for Ms. Keel or Dr. Keel, for Denver, Colorado. Dr. Lopez Lopez for Honolulu, and Dr. Radwan for Honolulu. So no for those three out-of-state travels. Thank you. But yes on everything else.
There is a New York one listed.
That's $118, so yes for that. Tri-state area is okay? As long as they're driving?
I'm, I'm sorry, can, can you repeat that, Jean? Because I know Paul and Jerry were talking about that. So you're saying no out-of-state except tri-state?
I just listed the three that were no. So the one for Colorado and two for Hawaii.
Okay. All right, and with that, we just double-check motion passes.
Hey, in the area of human resources, I would ask for the board's approval of the following motions. Resignations and retirements, revised seventh-period coverage, seventh-period coverage, change of status, leaves of absence, approving appointments, including Mr. David Stoco, who's still in the audience, approving lead school counselor stipend position, approving student teachers, approving a buddy, approving summer enrichment, approving extra coverage originally scheduled on the December 18th agenda, and approving extra coverage.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Come on. All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lemmingbeater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations and welcome aboard, Mr. Stoco.
Now get some sleep.
In the area of operations, I would ask for the board's consideration for the following motions. Accepting monthly financials, accepting line item transfers, accepting financial status, approving monthly bills, accepting donations, approving the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment, motion to designate the public agency compliance officer, and motion to approve proposals from Huntington Learning Center and Hay Tutor.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Actually, I, it's not actually a question, but may I make a comment?
Let's, motion second, then we can make a comment. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any comments by board members? Mr. Davis?
I just have some questions about some of the monthly bills. And I think it'd be most appropriate if I just reach out to Jerry and we'll make an appointment to go over some of these things.
Absolutely, if we need to amend, we can amend.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lemmingbeater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following policy, a motion to approve policy reviewed by the Education Committee for second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lemmingbeater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll now move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public during the board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time between the board and the public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which may be due if they're attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may make comments about items that are listed on the next agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may have a concern. The residents of the school district of the law 0167. Before you say your comment, you ask to provide your name and address or the limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as a question and session, but rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. The instance of the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy of the word president or superintendent will address the comment. If a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions, kindly don't deal with public meetings act and the privacy right of public employees and come as their end of the board discuss personnel issues in public session.
Hi, Amy Sounder, still a teacher at Otten Road, still AKA treasure, and still freezing. I just, you know, now that you, you passed the professional travel-related funds, I just wanted to comment, because I thought of this, you know, while I was listening to all of you. I have a couple of things. Number one, if they're going to present about the high school program, I'm just, and I know you can't answer, these are just my thoughts. I'm just curious whether or not the staff that actually execute and plan and run the program were asked to apply to present along with Ms. Radwan and Ms. Lopez Lopez, seeming as they would be able to give the most firsthand acknowledgement of it? And like, would that have been approved? Also, at the last board meeting in December, I actually spoke about a agenda item where you appointed an interim administrator to do evaluations, and all but one of you voted yes for that. That was $9,000, give or take, of operational funds. And the purpose of that, my understanding, was to help with evaluation overload. My understanding from members who have reported back is, this person has been doing a lot of those evaluations in the special ed field. So again, I can't help but wonder, if we're so overwhelmed with evaluations, and yet we're sending three administrators to conferences in January? And again, I know this is, it's already happened, so that's, it is what it is. But my final thought on all of that is, if those Title II funds are what's used and it's not operational, I respectfully request that moving forward, that our members will see the same acceptance on those types of TDs as others have been seeing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. As I listened to the discussion, I felt compelled to come up and address an overarching issue that seems to be impacting the working environment for some of our members. And that, the comment that spurred this was actually in the discussion of perhaps we should look at staff member X who may be going somewhere. And unfortunately, that's becoming a trend when concerns are raised. So when we do our job, which is advocate for our members, we're finding that the response often is, okay, well, how do we then do something back towards them? And that was really concerning for me, that I heard that spoken at the dais, that because we raise concerns about inequity and a disparate treatment for our members, that the question was, oh, well, maybe we should look at one of your members' travel then? Not knowing whether or not that's paid for or anything else in that. But really, what that ties back to is the bigger issue that's taking place, which is, you saw that we sent two communications, you've all read that, if, if you were on the board at the time. Read the two communications that we sent on the 18th. You saw that the first one came in at 10:23. There was a response from the administration at 10:41. We responded to that message at 12:11, noting concerns. And then within seven minutes of our response, the monthly meeting where we could have discussed these things was canceled. And that's actually the second time now this year that that's happened, where we've advocated on behalf of our members, and the monthly meeting where we're supposed to discuss things like what we talked about tonight, was then canceled by the administration, and we didn't have the ability to do that. Now, at the end of the day, that meeting isn't for us. That meeting isn't for the administration, it's for the staff, it's for the students, it's to make sure that we're addressing issues proactively, it's to ensure that, to the board's point, which was, why are we hearing about a lot of this now? That you can hear about these concerns prior to. But when we come forward to advocate, what we're finding is that the problematic issues of the past, where people are now saying, well, we're just not going to talk then. We're not, there's no communication, there's no collaboration. That's now coming back. And we expected that from the last iteration of the administration. We do not expect it now. But now that it's happened twice, and now that a comment was made publicly at a board meeting, I feel compelled to address that on behalf of my members. And if you want to know what's the impact of that? The impact of that is, that doesn't stop us from doing our job, but it forces us to do our job through means like ULPs, or, you know, unfair labor practices, or grievances, because we still have to defend our members' rights. In the 10 years that I have done this job, the most number of grievances I have had to file was 11. It is now January, and we have filed nine. So we're well on track to pass that record, and that honestly is rooted in the fact that we can't even discuss some of these concerns and proactively try to address them, because when we do, we receive comments about things like, well, then we'll look at what your members are doing. Or, you know what, now the meeting is canceled, we're not going to have that. So I think if we're truly going to move forward, and we want to get past what has happened in the, in the past, we need to all commit to do that. And we can't do that by modeling the toxic problematic behavior that past administrations did. So I hope that the board will join us in requesting that there be more collaboration, that we can move forward and actually have more communication, so that it doesn't have to be aired out once a month or twice a month, whatever the schedule will be, so that there can be more feedback coming to you, because that is the means in which you should get it, to avoid issues that you saw tonight, to avoid our 10th grievance, our 11th, our 12th, whatever that will be. You have responsibility to hear that, and there is a means for you to get it, but that means is currently closed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no others, I will close public comment and open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
Question?
Mr. Davis?
Listed on, on the agenda are correspondence, community correspondence. And one of those emails questioned the school calendar and brought up the question of Monday, December 23rd. And I don't have a solution, I'm not offering a solution, I just want to make sure that there's a light shining on that question, because I think it's a worthwhile question and something that wants to be looked at.
I agree, there is about seven carbon copies of that email that were also sent. So there was a coordinated effort to communicate that to the board, which is, which is fine. There seems to be a number of staff that are, I don't think it was mostly staff, that were in favor of that day being off. We, we have the option to look at calendars at any point in time in committee, and we can take that up at the next committee meeting.
I apologize, because I'm having a real hard time hearing you. And I don't think it's a volume thing, I think it's a tone quality thing, but that's beside the point. I don't know what you said.
Okay, I will be a little bit louder and I'll talk slower. We did receive a number of those emails that were carbon copies of that email, so there was like seven or eight of them, that all had the exact same message. I believe most of them came from the staff, so there was a, an effort to make that point seen by the board, which we've seen. At a committee meeting, we can review the calendar at any of the committee meetings, and we can have that discussion. And if we want to amend the calendar to make that a full day off, that's something we can always do at any, at any board meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
On the point of the calendar, while I, I agree, like, education usually takes a crack at it, as we discussed earlier, I think it would be good and helpful if the board, we heard from each other, maybe at the January 22nd meeting, we could bring ideas. Because I too, when I first saw the calendar, was not pleased with it, that it was on a Monday. But since it had been vetted through education, I didn't question it. I think other, other board members might have at the time, and it passed, but, so I hope that people can think about it, maybe have some ideas. It is a challenging calendar, but there was an email that gave examples of previous years, so I, and I think the difference though, was that this year we have the schools closed for primary. For the 24, 25 year, we have the schools closed for primary election. So that's one difference. The other difference is, I believe, DiVale is on October 31st, and that's a close. So those are two additional variables.
We have added some additional days off from the past.
Right, so perhaps we can think, although, when I looked at, when I looked at the Google, there was multiple days for DiVale. So, anyway. I do have two other things. I wanted to thank the business office, Mr. Eckard, Ms. LaFaye, that I got my tax bill, and I had printed out prior to the referendum what my actual assessed value was going to be. And I was a little nervous opening the envelope, but I did open it, and it was exactly the same, like, to the penny. I was like, wow, great job. So I wanted to acknowledge you, I thought that was phenomenal. Okay. The next thing was, oh, I would like to mention, can't find it, hang on, oh, here we are. On the table behind with the board agendas, I have placed some packet of Resources for Youth and Family, and so I wanted to remind the community of many free options in the state, namely Perform Care. That Perform Care is a free service from the state of New Jersey, and you can just Google it, it's performcarenj.org. And basically, parent, I'm just going to read it. Parents, legal guardians of youth 18 and under, if, wait, and if the youth is 18 or older, they have to call themselves. But they can call Perform Care to access mobile response and stabilization services or the care management organization, which is basically a free service. If your child is in crisis, they will come out, they will assess your child, and offer you, and connect you to free services within the state. Additionally, in Somerset County, there is Family Crisis Intervention Unit. That phone number is 908-704-6330, and they offer immediate intervention, assessment, short-term family counseling. And I believe they are also the ones who can help if there's truancy, when your child is refusing school. And so I encourage folks to take a look at those services. You never know when you're going to need them, so just having that information available, I think, is very important. And that's all for me. Thank you.
I just want to provide an update on the Action Committee. So prior to winter break, Mr. DeLolo and I, alongside several other students, part of the Action Committee, met to discuss the final testing policies. And some solutions we came up with were proposing various alternatives for seniors and students in AP exams to better reflect their preparation for the AP exam and to provide some consistency between final exams and AP exams, which include perhaps using a practice, practice exam in place of their final grade. And in terms of the bathroom policies, or the bathroom rules, I should say, we will, we're planning to work on that as well as where we're getting into the new.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, I have a couple of comments, so hopefully you'll be able to hear me. First of all, I just want, for board members, since this is our meeting, for those of you that could not attend or did not attend the conference recently, Mr. Hill sent out the files from the presenters, so check your inbox, and you have the ability to review them. So thank you, Mr. Hill, for sending those out, I appreciate it. And we did not have the last meeting of the year last year. We were going to thank Mr. Kidd for his service to the board. He is no longer on the board, but for those of you who may or may not be aware, he joined as a high school student, which is a daunting task for somebody to have to sit in a room of adults, I'll call it that, adults, and kind of serve the community in that way. It was very, very big of him to put his name in there and serve. It created some weird situations, I think, with him while he was still in high school, and what he could share and what he could not share, but I just wanted to, in case you're watching, you can watch this later, thank you, Ben, for your service to the community and to the board. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.